Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting Monday, December the fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and it's nine o'clock a.m. in council chambers. I will call this meeting to order and ask if there are any introduction of late items. Hearing none. We have no delegations, so we will move on to the business portion of the meeting. And the first thing is the Metalark Richter property. Mr. Cunningham.
Good morning, council. Over the next few days, business planning. Can you hear me now? Yes. Over the next few days, business planning and beyond, you're going to be hearing mention of the southeast Metalark, the Richter property and affordable housing. So I thought I'd take the opportunity this morning of acquainting you with those things. And I've provided you each a copy of expressions of interest for developing the Richter property, which we sent out earlier this year without any success, but we're hoping that with the market picking up generally in the Okanagan, that things will turn around next year. But anyhow, I just wanted to use this as a vehicle for acquainting you with what we're doing in that area. And I'll go through and briefly point out some salient points in it. You'll see in page two that there's a number of attachments. These are referred to in the text. And if you want to go into the site for the EOI, you'll find that all of those attachments are attached right there for your convenience. The focus of the expression of interest was on the Richter property itself, which is just south of Fire Hall. It's three point two, three acres, and it's capable of accommodating about forty mixed housing types. There's going to be opportunities over the coming years to build out the whole of the Richter property, and that could total about three hundred housing units, would be a variety of units for offerings to anything from young working families, the whole way to retirees and everything in between, and including a component of affordable housing. Site context, I won't go over the terrain and so forth, and you know where it's located, but some interesting points, I think, in terms of the servicing. The town is going to be providing a stub access road as part of the Fire Hall project to the north end of the property. That will also include water. And then from the south side, as you'll be hearing during our capital project discussions, there's going to be a DCC project, sewer project, which will sewer both the Richter property and eventually all of that whole southeast Metalark area. It'll go down to a gravel line and then across the road to our existing sewer system. So it can be quite economically serviced. The developer would be responsible for everything onsite, laterals, roads, storm drainage, and so forth. But we would want that everything would be designed, supervised by our engineer to make sure that it's done properly. This package and everything we're doing followed the initiative of the southeast Metalark area plan, which was prepared a few years ago in two ten. And I should note it was adopted by a council as a schedule to our town's official committee plan, so it has the full force of an official committee plan under local government act. The plan itself, and then subsequently there's a development concept, which was attached to it, and those both went through a positive public process. There was also a positive public process with the respective public hearings that also were held. And we will be going back to the nearby residents in the future as well. Development policies, the area's transitioning from a rural area to urban, and there's not too many agricultural activities left in the area, actually. And the plan will assist with managing that transition. And at the end of the transition, we foresee that about sixty percent of the total area may be developed with mixed housing types to meet varying social and demographic needs. The Richter property is the one which we anticipate will be developed first, and we're hoping that will act as a catalyst for the development of all the other areas, which will be private properties as opposed to Richter, which is public owned. There's actually no pressure requirement on the private property owners to develop. That's up to them to either develop themselves or go in unison with a developer at the time that they want to move on. I'll mention our collaborative arrangement with the Agricultural Land Commission. The area plan was partially prepared for them, and they reviewed it, and they were impressed by it to the degree that they have agreed to incrementally let out the area, most of it's in the ALR right now, let out the area from the agricultural land reserve over time as needed. But they're certain, they want the plan to be followed, followed with everything we do, and there's certain specific policies that they're going to be looking for when they review any applications from the town. And that would be that it would be developed at fairly high density of thirty, thirty units per developable hectare to make sure that we're making the best use of the lands. That will include a fifteen percent affordable housing set aside, which I'll get to later. And for properties where this is relevant, it's not relevant in case the Richter property, but there would be a proper buffer zone between the urban areas and the surrounding lands, which are going to remain within the agricultural land reserve. If you turn to four housing choices, you'll see that with the benefit of our architect, we've identified a colorful range of different housing types that can be accommodated on the site, and includes small lot, single-family housing, option of carriage housing at the rear of the single-family homes, small lot, two-family housing, either back-to-back or side-by-side, the option of walkout secondary suites in the basements of the side-by-side units when the slope allows, and there are some instances of that, and row housing. And lastly apartments, but the apartments would be probably a maximum of three stories. I don't see them going over four. So turning to the affordable housing component of that, under the tool of inclusionary zoning, as a requirement of zoning approval, every developer would have to set aside fifteen percent of the units as affordable units. And they would be available through a housing authority to qualified purchasers to buy or rent at about twenty percent less than the market. The focus, the focus of those affordable housing unit sales or rentals would be younger families, younger households, children, the type of people that we need to attract into our community to diversify both our demographics and our economic base. The market houses, I should stress, because this is not always the case, sorry, the near-market homes, would be undistinguishable on the outside from the market units, and they'd be fully interspaced between them. We recognize that the builder's not going to take this on without some kind of financial incentives, both because they're going to be losing some money and both because of the difficulty of doing something that's a little bit different than the norm in the marketplace. So the town would be prepared to offer, to negotiate adequate financial incentives. And pardon me, and the last council did agree on a negotiation package. It's quite clearly laid out in terms of what we would be offering first, and as you go down the line, things that we might have to throw in depending upon the market conditions at the time. But it includes the usual things like discounts on building permit fees, DCCs. It could go the whole way to temporary reduction or freeze on property taxes. But we only go down that far if we actually have to depend on the circumstances. When everything's agreed, it would be codified in a section nine of five housing agreement, that's under local government act, and those are very powerful things indeed. They actually have more security than a covenant does on the property. So you know that if the developer's committed to those things, that it's going to be done. We had a special design challenge because we've got fairly high densities with a focus on ground entry units, or at least low walk-ups. So you've got a lot of diversified building types, which are quite close together, and that, as I say, presents quite a design challenge. It can't be met through normal zoning, so we utilize what's called a farm-based zoning, which takes more of a three-dimensional approach, both in terms of written guidelines and graphics to assist the developer through the process and end up with quality urban design for the area. There's two, sorry, three components of the farm-based zoning approach. The first one, the overall design concept, and that's attached to the area plan. It just shows the potentials for the overall development of the area. We did that partly to provide sort of inspiration and guidance to developers, but also to make sure that in fact we could reach our target of about three hundred units for the whole area. And then we get into what's called intensive residential development permit area guidelines. And they include both general permit guidelines, which were developed by staff, which cover all housing types. And then we get into the specific guidelines, which are for each applicable housing type, which may be represented in the development question. And that was, those were prepared by our architect. And as allowed under local government act, they can be applied in more detail and more prescriptively than our normal form and character guidelines. Lastly, IRD zone, but there's no development conditions in the zone. Those are in the guidelines, so they just include a list of the allowable or permitted uses with a cross-reference to the development guidelines. So it's quite an innovative system, one of the most innovative in the province. I've got a couple of examples, including your package, one of the overall design concepts, and then part of the specific guidelines for single, for single-family housing. And then going over the integrated development design and planning, we realize that we're facing a special challenges working with developers here and trade-offs between the different types of design guidelines that we want to see and developers being concerned about the bottom end. And we are quite prepared to go into a collaborative approaches, approach to see where we can make trade-offs between everybody's interests and make sure we get the best quality product for everybody that is going to be, going to be affordable and something that developers want to do. So I'm open to any questions if you have any at all.
Director, Councilor Campbell, go ahead.
The fifteen percent component for affordable housing, where did that number come from as a percentage?
Okay. If you, sorry, he's always having to tell me about this thing. Yeah. If you go through the literature across North America, they vary between ten percent and twenty-five percent. And we adopted the fifteen percent partially on the recommendation of a consultant, which we had, who worked with our affordable housing task force initially. That was the first step in preparing this. So we had some citizens from our community who kindly stepped forward and worked real hard on this with a consultant. And so that kind of number was considered to be something which was significant in terms of getting a reasonable proportion of affordable units in there, but also realistic in terms of expectations that developers would be prepared to do that.
Thank you.
Can I ask, if someone purchased an affordable housing unit, they would have to go through some kind of a screening process, I'm assuming, in order to qualify for that. How soon, so they purchase it, how soon after that can they sell it for higher market value? Has that been thought of? I just wondered if that was a possibility.
Yeah, that's something which is going to have to be dealt with by the housing authority, and they would be developing their own rules, but there are some models out there. The most promising one from my point of view is the one that's implemented by Whistler, who probably, pardon me, who amongst all the local governments in B.C. probably have more experience doing this than anybody. And what they say is that, is that to avoid somebody getting a wind-filled profit, they'll say, we'll only pay you the rate of inflation for the years that you actually own the unit. So everything else will come back to the housing authority and be part of their revolving fund.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
When looking at the need for the affordable housing, we talked about elderly, and we talked about migrant workers, hospitality workers, is there a concern that a lot of that need is seasonal need?
Well, I'm hoping that, you know, with the primary target unit being younger working households, I'm hoping that that won't be seasonal, that we'll be talking about people that will be taking jobs within the community here, not commuting back and forth to Alberta, for instance. But it could also include people that are going to be working at the new penitentiary. So we wanted to be in quick enough to be able to capture that market opportunity.
Thank you. Councilor Rhodes.
Thank you. Just in general terms, I'm wondering about, and I know this is kind of a minor thing, but the buffering aspect of it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering two things. Do we have a policy regarding that right now? And what would be your impression, and where would that happen in this particular development? And what does it look like?
Yeah. So in terms of Richter property, we would only apply it, sorry, to southeast Metalark, we'd only apply it at the outside boundary to that whole area. We wouldn't apply it just to Richter property. So it'd be on the west side, north side, and, sorry, the west side, north side, and south side. And we have our own guidelines for that. We have development permit guidelines for agricultural buffer areas. So they're typically, you're talking about fifteen meters. And we hold the position that if there was a road allowance, which is part of that, that should be counted as part of the buffer. Agricultural Land Commission are not too keen on that idea, but they're behind most jurisdictions in that regard. So that it could be a road allowance, it could just be empty space, but there would be fences and there would be trees. And the idea is to reduce two ways, the nuisances on farmers, and quite a lot of farmers suffer nuisances when there's urban development right next to them. And on the other side, reduce the impact of things like spraying and so forth on residents in the urban areas. So we have those guidelines in place.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilor Youngberg.
Has anyone picked up the packages? Has there been any interest? Have you given any of the developers or an individual the package at all?
I had one developer, well, I've had two people go through it here locally, and one developer, I kind of construed from what he said, that he was less interested in being a developer, he was more interested in being a builder. And so if we proceed forward in the future, and we don't get somebody, pardon my source here, if we don't get somebody to step up on the plate and take over the whole development, then the option is for the town to act as the developer and make lots available to builders. In that situation, I don't see any shortage of people, including local builders, stepping up to a plate and wanting to do that. But we haven't given up on prospecting for potential developers. I have a list of six people. Kelowna, down the coast, and Alberta, that was provided to me by our architect. It was not just an architect, but his family in Alberta have owned a construction company. He's very closely tied in with the construction industry, so he's providing me a list of six contacts for me to proceed with. And I just haven't had the time to do that, but in the new year, I intend to do it.
Okay, thank, thank you. Councilor Rhodes.
Thanks again. Just wondering about that, so, you know, in a perfect world, we get a developer and he starts, you know, forming this thing out and building. One of the big sales aspects of it would be that kettle and some of the exciting things that are kind of going on around there, like the bridge and the cookout area and the park and all that kind of thing. What is the status of that? I thought it was privately owned, but that, how would we, you know, use that as a, maybe a role?
It is privately owned, but for, with the exception of the residential strip down Ren Place, most of the people in that area, and this is coming from what they told me personally when they come to our open houses, they want, they want to sell, and they want to sell under, in the right conditions. So for instance, when we've got properties that, well, not just to join the kettle, but they go into the kettle, when those people were stepping up to the plate and they either themselves want to develop or go along with a developer, then we would be talking in terms of the zoning and the whole package and so forth, that we want public access, some public access to the kettle. And there would be requirements to conserve that area, and we want to make sure that it's preserved, that it doesn't get polluted, we don't have runoff from the existing hard surface areas. We'd require plantings to make sure that everything gets properly filtrated as it goes down, goes down to the kettle.
Well, that covers the surrounding property around it, but what about the kettle itself?
Well, that, they're, that's a very good question. We did look into that, and Kelowna have the most incredibly sophisticated tools for controlling that kind of thing. And I only can understand them by reading them each time. I really can't relay them to you right now, but it's, we got like a two-page, very legalistic description from somebody who works in the Kelowna Planning Department, and being a lot bigger department than ours, they can have specialized people doing that kind of thing. But there are the tools through covenants to control that.
So is the owner of the kettle willing to sell? No?
There would, there would be an agreement. There would be agreement that in fact the access would be protected for the public and nothing untoward could be done to the kettle itself. It couldn't be filled in, for instance. It would be protected as part of the conditions of development.
And would that be the developer's job to do that, or is that the town's job?
It would be the town's, town's job to lay out those particular requirements, and then we'd request, you know, all the pertinent trees. If it's going to be the developer, then the developer would have to sign the dotted line to it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any more questions concerning this?
I do.
Councilor Youngberg?
What's the kettle?
Finstadpon.
Oh, yeah. Well, hey, been here a long time, you ever heard that before?
With two S's.
Well, it's boiling.
Yeah, they're all, they're all, all of those things are kettles left over from glatiation, but we were very strongly told by one of the people whose family owned that area that it does have a name. So the name doesn't occur in this document because we got that message after that, but we're starting to use it in all our documentation.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no more questions, thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham, for, oh, sorry.
Can I just ask, maybe I'll add to, or Director Cunningham, to provide some, where are we at with the Affordable Housing Committee, the housing authority?
Okay, well, we gotta, we gotta get that back on the tracks again. Council Ryan was somebody who expressed an interest in being a leader in that. So we, we had one, one meeting, and that was with Council McCorduff at the time, being a member. And we went, we went through a few items. We decided, for instance, that we recommend to council that it should be an authority rather than a society, but we have to get that on the rails again and develop some terms of reference and some proposals for soliciting volunteers from the general, general community, people with as broad range of skills as possible. It'd be nice to have a ex-bank manager or whatever in there because of the financial issues, but we need to get going with that in the new year.
Thank you. Do we need to have a resolution to ask Mr., no, we don't, we're, we're good. Okay. Thank you very much. The second item on our agenda this morning is the, get it, the letter from Hudson Hope resupport for a one-year moratorium on the Site C Dam. Mr. Remanko, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Yes, this is, I guess, provided within council's package for a couple of reasons. One specifically in around the fact that another council is asking for this council's support on the, looking for a letter requesting a one-year moratorium on the Site C Dam. But there's a, there's a couple of things that come into play here, is that council, you know, as part of our orientation, council will receive numerous amounts of letters like this, requesting council's support or action in a particular area. So, and what's been traditionally done is that all correspondence, I guess with the changing technologies, we circulate all correspondence that's addressed to county mayor and council, it's sent to mayor and council, and it's not usually included in council's package unless an individual councillor says, you know, I would like to have a discussion on this. So just as a matter of process, when, when council does get items of correspondence, if they would like to see it as an agenda item, it should be requested as an agenda item. This was placed on specifically because as an example of, you know, where do we go to from here? And so it comes to the committee of the whole, and if council in fact was going to have a letter of support, that particular resolution to provide a letter of support should come from the committee of the whole to a, to a regular council meeting. So this gives, coming to the committee of the whole, it gives an opportunity for council to discuss it and to see whether or not there is council interest in addressing the issue, not only an individual councillor's interest in addressing the issue. So specific to this particular item, it is very a complex item. When you take a look at what's being provided as, as part of the information package, it certainly is, you know, an item that is of provincial significance, and also for Hudson Hope being a very close community. So I'm looking for council's direction, whether or not we should take it for a resolution to, you know, to a regular council meeting. The item, I guess, or part of the item to consider is that this is not the entire package. You know, my kind of recommendation to council is when, when something comes to council, that we have a full briefing on all the items, all the issues, prior to council providing some type of support letter or recommendation. In this case, this is a very small part of the whole package, so to provide a letter of support, you're only going on what's in the package here unless you, unless we do a lot of research and a lot of information seeking in this particular area.
Thank you. Yeah, when I had a look at this as well, I thought, number one, it's outside our region, and so it doesn't, while it affects all of us in the province, it's not necessarily something that is directly related to our region. We do need to look at both sides. We cannot, we've been, council has been caught a couple of times before where we, we got on the bandwagon about one issue and then realized that there was a totally different side to it, which we had not been privy to. So we need to be careful of that. And there is another vehicle for dealing with this, and that is to bring it to the U. And there is another vehicle for dealing with this, and that is to bring it to the U B C M. So I, my, to my way of thinking, I I like Mr Romanko's suggestion that we that we accept it and 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 leave it for now. But perhaps other councillors would like to respond. Councillor Rhodes.
Thanks. So there's a good reason why we have different levels of government in Canada or municipal government, albeit a small one in the province. But I view this as being strictly a provincial situation. They're the ones that are gathering the information and have the knowledge about it. I would not feel comfortable supporting it. And similarly, I'm not exactly sure whether I want to do all of the research so we can make it. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a huge, well, it's it's the biggest thing that's ever happened in this province dollar wise, I think. And I'd feel a lot more comfortable just leaving it to our provincial counterparts and, you know, evaluating what their decisions are and and kind of, you know, moving forward with that. I I don't feel qualified to support them or or nor do I really want to gather that information. I know I'm repeating myself, but I think it's important. That document's got to be, you know, seven feet high and 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 getting added to every day. And, yeah, I just think we should just accept this or maybe not even accept it, just kind of pretend that we didn't get it or whatever. Yeah, it's pretty complex and I don't feel comfortable dealing with it at all.
Anyone else? Councillor King.
Yeah, I just wondered very, can we just kind of let it go dead or do we have to respond to the letter?
No, you don't have to respond to the letter. No, just, you know, accept it as information and 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 move on.
Councillor Youngberg, you all right with that?
That was my question too.
So could I have a motion to to accept it as correspondence? Councillor King, seconder?
Second.
We do? We have to?
Yeah, it, you know, I I guess in terms of motions at the at the committee of the whole, again, as part of the orientation, we we focus in the committee of the whole as is, you can provide a direction to to the C A O through through motion, which could be, you know, just accepting this as information. But we stay away from things like spending money, passing laws. All those, all those types of activities happen in in normal council meetings. But the the procedural bylaw says that resolutions can be passed and provide direction to the to the C A O.
So rather than do that, can we just accept it as correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, and do we need a motion to do that?
It, we can, we can work at that, yeah.
Okay, so councillor King, councillor Youngberg, all in favor? Thank you. So as I think that is the the end of the meeting. So could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Thank you. Councillor Campbell, councillor Rhodes, all in favor? Thank you, the meeting's adjourned. See you later, Keith.